Select the flag, please.
I don't know, I'm going to pick.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we had scheduled a workshop for today with Attorney William Phillips, but we're postponing that. Do you have a new date for that, Jerry?
Yeah, if we could. Couldn't do it tonight, but if we could schedule it for June 4th, I would propose that, you know, because our meetings now start at 6:00, we do the workshops at 5:00. It wouldn't eat into regular board time. He's looking like needing an hour and a half to do a proper write to know law presentation.
Everybody okay with June 4th, Ralph?
I have a presentation that's from 2009. It's the very same thing, and I will make DVDs, copies, for everybody on the board if you'd like to have that previous to that. It's a two-hour thing, but it's all the same stuff, different players, different, but it regards school boards and government meetings.
Everybody want one of those?
Yes, please.
Cool.
Thank you, Ralph.
Yeah.
We good for?
June 4th, it's a Tuesday, 5:00. Everybody okay with that?
Probably go over to about 6:30.
Did you say 5:00?
5:00.
Is that a regular school board meeting, right?
It is.
My phone doesn't work for that anymore.
It is, but just having the workshop at 5:00 rather than at 6:00.
Okay. Are we agreeing with that?
Yep.
Everybody?
Great, thank you.
Do we need to go into non-public right now?
Yes, sir.
Need a motion to go into non-public?
So moved. Can I do that?
Under 91.
Under 91, yeah, 91.
RSA 91A32B.
And C.
And C.
I second.
All in favor?
Fogey.
Johnson, I.
Cold eye.
Blood eye.
McCollie, I.
You all set? Move on. Public comment?
First you're gonna say something?
Oh, buddy. No public comment. Consent agenda. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda? Anyone?
Make a motion to, sorry, go ahead. Make, to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
I second for discussion.
Yep, second for discussion.
Can we pull the minutes out of that consent agenda?
Aye, that's what I'll, and if we could also pull up the, um, the minutes for the joint board meeting since there are people that weren't sitting, members who weren't at either.
And I have a correction to a name.
Go ahead.
Public, second line, Robin and Steve, Gahan. G-A-H-A-N.
Page, we got?
What page, Jim?
Oh, one of the notes, three of the packet, under public. Got it. And Randy Fox is spelled wrong, too. It's R-A-N-D-I-E.
Anybody else?
I have, so did we separate the minutes from the consent agenda?
We need a motion to approve.
Well, we just consensus, but, um, the reason I bring that up is, um, my motion at the last meeting was to approve the minutes with any amendments offered. It was not to approve the consent agenda, so I wanted that to be clear.
Page, anyone?
Page 3 of the minutes, five of the packet, under consent agenda. Motion, Mr. Fogg made a motion to approve the consent agenda. That's not actual, I made a motion to approve the minutes with any amendments offered. So that I should, and that would be my common motion all the time.
I was just gonna say, can we make that for this one?
Amendments?
Well, there was already a motion to approve the consent agenda before I.
So I'll withdraw. I withdraw the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Who seconded that?
Sandy did.
Sandy.
And that's how we got into this discussion.
Sandy, withdraw your second.
Yep.
You don't have to. I'm just trying to separate the minutes from the rest of it.
But I think we, I think you separate after you, a motion is made and then you separate, not before. That's the way I think it goes.
Well, you're looking, you're going on the minutes now. You, you, you want a motion.
We're into the agenda item.
Right. So we're talking about making, approving this with amendments.
That part of the motion, yes.
So Ralph, you're asking if you want to go forward with this, keeping the minutes out of the consent agenda, pulling it forward? You asking that?
Well, I, I think it's easier and it's cleaner, but consent agendas, you know, if they, if it's covering everything on the, in the list on the agenda, and there's a motion and a second, you know, I mean, that's the motion that either fails or prevails.
That works for me.
We okay, Jerry, doing that? Keeping that out like that? It's a lot cleaner like that.
Okay.
Okay. So we have a motion. You want to do the motion with consent agenda first?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Without the?
Without the minutes.
With amendments.
Without, with or without the minutes?
Oh, without the minutes.
Right.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 We need a motion to approve the.
I'll make a motion to approve the public and non-public minutes of April 16th with any amendments offered.
And do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Wait a minute. Now we gotta make, now, now we have discussion because there was a second.
I thought we had the discussion for the.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I don't mean to make anything, uh.
Well, what else you have?
Well, we get amendments for the last name Gahan and the first name Randy.
Yeah, that's why I thought we had it.
Yep.
Is there any others?
And then Ralph's yours on page 5.
Yeah.
Of the packet.
Minutes of the public, oh, the agenda. And that is.
Any others?
Did you get that, the rest of these amendments?
Yeah, I'm all set. No, I'm all set.
And, cause my motion was for public and non-public, so if you want to review the non-public minutes as well.
Yeah, no, I did already.
Yep.
I'm all set.
So I put motion and a second. Who seconded that one? Sorry.
I did, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain. And we, now the, for the area.
Joint Board.
Actually, did we complete everything that we needed to complete for the non-public? Did we, do any of the votes that we need to share in public? Did we take care of all of our, Ralph, did we take care of all of our, we took care of all of our non-public that we needed to?
Well, we didn't make any decisions. We didn't take any action.
Right, we didn't take any action.
So there's nothing in, in public that we need to report that we did in non-public.
We did with the deputy.
That's the way I would believe.
I think we did with the deputy.
Uh, the motion failed.
Right.
Right, so it didn't.
It was, it didn't go anywhere.
There was no, there was, there was no vote taken.
No vote.
Well, there was a vote, but the motion failed.
No, there was a vote, and then, but no, but the deputy didn't get passed.
That's correct.
Right. So it was no motion?
Uh, no action, no action.
They're telling you, you only have to announce it if we decided to do something.
I thought we did, essentially.
Go move forward. We didn't, we decided not to do anything.
The motion failed.
If, if the motion failed, it didn't do it. We decided not to do it. Not, so we're not doing anything.
Okay.
Makes sense.
Yep. Okay.
Anything else?
Area Joint Board Meeting.
I move to accept the area joint board meeting on April 29th, 2019 minutes.
Can we, can we discuss that at all? I'll second it.
For discussion?
Yeah, I just want to get out there that, um, that it was a really good, anybody going to Spalding next year, we got to tour the new stuff that they're building, and it's really impressive. Open spaces, they talked about some different things they were doing, things that kids can compete to get into classes, and they compete based on grades and behavior and attendance, all the good things that you like to see people competing on for. It was really, I think Jerry and Ann both went, really impressive, wasn't it? The building, what they're doing, you know, I graduated from there and it, you wouldn't recognize it.
It's a multi-million dollar renovation.
There was some great questions asked. Jen, you want to elaborate what you, you asked about the 10% and all that?
Oh, yeah, so bluntly, we're getting nowhere on the 10% increasing more kids. The area agreement is pretty firm. We'd have to go through the state of New Hampshire and it would take years. So, and we're, they want us to stick to it because they need the, to know how much money is coming their way so that they can plan on it, and they don't want half the kids in Wakefield going to another school when they're counting on the income. They also, was it the principal? Is really interested in getting Wakefield parents down to Spalding for some of the information nights. He asked me what we could do to get people down there. I suggest that anybody whose kid is going to Spalding or thinking about going to Spalding in the next couple of years, go to some of these because they were really involved. They had a lot to say, and I think everybody's kid will do better if they know all the opportunities are, are available to them. But it was, um, it was pretty impressive. I, you know, I graduated there a long, long time ago, not a big fan in general, and I was blown away.
I will say that, you know, you just kind of, you know, carry on what you were, you were talking about, that Paul Lynch, the board chair, did say they would be willing to sit and talk about increasing the numbers beyond 10%. Although it is a process they're willing to talk about.
They're willing to have a group, but it's not gonna happen. They'll have the group and it's, right? I mean, that was pretty much it.
Well, I'm just saying, I was gonna say, they were, they were willing to talk about it and, you know, it's certainly something that is worthy of discussion. Maybe just go that route.
Any other comments?
You get a whole different takeaway from that than I did.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Jen?
Aye.
I abstain. One more thing on the minutes.
Yep.
Um, just during the write no discussion, all that stuff, we'll learn that, that public or non-public minutes, if somebody was to say a direct, for the record, or I'd like to amend this one way or the other, if, especially if it's that person's comment, that member of a board or commission has the right, and nobody has a right to deny that amendment. Just, you'll, you'll learn that throughout the process, that each board member, if they feel they have something important or pertinent to the subject, those minutes can be amended to reflect that person's input.
Just a question. So let's say someone wants to do that, but it's not what they said. So they say A in a meeting, but you're saying that we can't deny them the right to do that.
Yeah, well, the, the, the member should have enough integrity not to try to pull something like that.
One would hope.
Yeah. Thank you, Ralph. Reports. Superintendent's report?
We still need them. That's supposed to manifest.
That's part of the consent agenda. That was already.
Yep.
Superintendent's report, in your packet, you see the committee's schedule. It'll be posted on the district website and the school. I'm sorry, I'm looking at my own bits. Page 18 of the agenda. It'll be posted on the district website and the school on the foyer bulletin board. Meeting times will typically be at 5:00 since we started. We start at 6:00 now, so the committee meetings will be at 5:00 unless otherwise noted. There are some committees that will meet later on, but those will be put on the schedule. Yeah, after our discussion last week, I did contact Cafe Services because I was concerned that I had a different understanding of what was said by Cafe Services than what some of the board members did. So I did call, I did speak with the cafeteria services staff here, and I called Chris Pharoah, and he did indicate that there is, they do give larger portions to the students. It's not within the guidelines, but they're, they train their staff, what he called it, common sense portioning, to make sure that the students do get a little more. The way Rachel explained it, if younger kids get four nuggets, older kids might get five or six. Again, just trying to give them a little more food, saying if you got a, if you've got a kid in third grade who's larger than most of his peers, he may end up with some common sense portioning, as he'd put it. Just wanted to kind of put that out to all of you.
We were gonna ask questions on this.
Yeah, sure.
In regard to that, something was brought to my attention that another kid actually didn't get a lunch and the teacher gave them goldfish for lunch. A mom told me. I do know through my own kid that the special meals that you can, you know, ask for, people aren't counting right, which is scary to think there are.
Who's not counting?
Teachers, well, whoever does the counts and sends it to the, to the kitchen. So I think that some, something needs to be done where teachers need to be told that they need to take it seriously, get the correct counts, because there are kids who aren't getting what they want for lunch when they order it, or they're not having anything left for them at lunch when they order it. And that's horrifying.
You can bring that up your staff. All right. Jerry?
Jim, I'm sorry. Bring it up, yeah.
Okay.
Legislative update, are you all done, Jim?
Yeah.
I'm not, sorry. There are three pieces of legislation moving forward around suicide prevention, and it looks like SB 282 will move forward and two others will not move forward or are deemed too inexpending to legislate. Regardless of what legislation moves forward, it's pretty clear they're probably going to have some level of suicide prevention training for teachers, and it'll happen this year in legislation or for next school year. We're being proactive on that and having the training being done here at school this year. Not this year, but it'll be for the start of next, next fall. Again, just kind of getting a jump on that. SB 100 is currently in committee and it will probably pass, and this bill prohibits employees from inquiring about a job applicant's criminal history on the job application. What that means, it's called, it's the check the box legislation, meaning, you know, on that where you apply for a job, it asks you, have you, do you have a criminal history? And if you don't check it, or you check it and say, yeah, you do, you might be discriminated against. So they are, what the legislation is saying is that you can't disqualify somebody based on that, on that box and eliminating that box from the, you could still do your criminal background check and not hire somebody based on the criminal background check, but you can't discriminate against somebody under this legislation by that box. And we do have that box on our application, and so we may have to remove that, and I listed the, the crimes that we are, that we can restrict somebody from employment in a school district, and I gave you the, the list of that range of crimes.
It's good to know that they are letting you not hire a teacher who's guilty of capital murder. That's kind of ridiculous. Discriminating in something somebody did, they chose to do.
That's no, but they're saying is you can't, what they're saying is you can't discriminate based on that box.
But except for these.
I get it, it's ridiculous, though.
No, no, it, it, you can, you can, you can not hire somebody based on any crime, but you can't have the box on your application. We, we criminal background check all of our staff. So we still do the criminal background check, but you can't discriminate based on that, that box.
Good to know.
Yeah. I, I had questions about it at our last meeting. And I attended the NHSAA Student Behavioral Health Conference and had the opportunity to meet with the founder of Choose Love, which was the, uh, the mother of a child who was murdered at the, in Sandy Hook. And we are working, I'm working with the state right now to have that training come in here at the start of the school year.
But is that the free training?
It's a free training, and it doesn't mean we're gonna go with that one, but we're gonna, we're gonna introduce it to staff, take a look at that. There'll be somebody from the state. It's, it's got a level of importance at the state level that they have a representative who works out of Homeland Security that manages nothing but this Choose Love program. So that's my, that's my report. Any questions?
Is there any, any feedback from fifth grade? Just wanted to know how.
Defer that to Jim and Jen and Ann. They've been working with that.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Just any reports for the fifth grade?
Um, yeah, I can speak a little about it. So we've had the plan in place since a week ago Monday, tweaking it a little bit each day. BCBA, excuse me, BCBA was in two days last week, observing for the full day. Very unusual way to use our BCBA. Usually she's student, just working with one student at a time, but she's been able to target behaviors, so the, the plan is developed around the behaviors. The kids have thought into it. I think Jen's telling me that there's been much less referrals to the office.
I'm seeing far fewer students that are sent to the office on a daily basis. So there are definitely still students that are being referred for major behaviors, but the number of students that are, that were being sent out, you know, a month ago, a couple months ago, on a regular basis is much, much lower.
Is that because there's fewer bad behaviors or the teacher is, or substitute teacher is looking the other way? I mean, I've, I've, like, you know, it's kind of hard to.
No, I, I would say it's because of the plan in place. What I'm, and they're, the team is meeting tomorrow. Tomorrow?
Thursday.
Thursday. So there's data being taken daily, so that when the BCBA comes in, two and a half days a week that she's here, she reviews the data, tweaks the, the plan based on the data, so we'll be reviewing that data on Thursday. So that will be almost two weeks of data that we'll have to see. The kids are very, very engaged in wanting to participate in this plan. They're, they're very engaged in identifying the behaviors that they know are distracting the classroom. We set, we totally changed the physical environment over vacation so that it's, the room looks very different and there's stations where kids that can, that are needing a break or kids that just need quiet time to go do work can go to. We're heavily loaded with staff in that room. That, that's the, the piece that we want to be able to wean eventually is, you know, we've got two, a special ed teacher, a regular ed teacher, two care professionals, and maybe a tutor in there, so we're pretty heavily loaded. And right now, we're making a good job at really stretching our special ed staff, so I really want to be cautious of that.
Is the regular teacher a substitute teacher?
Yes.
When you say, so it's, so it's not a regular teacher? Is she, I, I mean, I don't know what she's qualified for, but I had heard concerns out and about about it being a substitute teacher, not a fully qualified teacher. Is she?
She is a teacher who I, my understanding is that she was a certified elementary education teacher. She let her certification lapse. She is in process of getting that certification back, and I'm not clear whether we currently have a statement of eligibility. So when a teacher is trying to get their certification back, they can apply to the state to have a statement of eligibility. She, I'm not clear on whether that's happened or not. It should because she would easily get a statement of eligibility based on her education and background. So her training is in regular education and.
Special ed, too, I thought. I thought it was also special education.
Could be, Jerry. I would have to look back at her file.
Yes, it sounds like things are under control, and thank you for the update. I have one question. So we have, you know, a little bit more time left for the end of the school year. How will this actually change next year in that, in that class? Will there be some major changes that way?
So we're hoping, so some of the things that we're doing right now is where the, another special ed teacher is doing some social emotional groups where they're teaching social emotional skills. We will have a transition time with sixth grade teachers to talk about what we've done, but by the time they transition to sixth grade, it's our hope that they don't need as much support as they currently need. And we only have two fifth grade classrooms. We will have three sixth grade classrooms, so we'll be able to spread them out a little more.
And again, thank you for the update. If you could, you know, keep us updated, you know, with meeting, every meeting, if you could, because, you know, it was a big concern, so I'd like to keep that going if possible.
Sure. You want it in writing or just what I'm hearing or something?
Just, your report is, is fine, when you do your report.
Am I missing anything? Because you guys are in there all the time.
Good, Jim.
So a, a little bit more specifically, the group, the group got together when we got the behavior specialist in there, and they determined what are the three biggest areas that we need to improve on, and they did this as a group with students and staff. And they, the three biggest concerns are volume, side conversations, and side comments or off-topic comments. And those three areas that the group came up with would have been the three areas that I would have handpicked as an administrator. So it's, they're in tune with what's going on. And so those three areas, volume, side conversations, and, and off-topic comments, that's the data we're collecting, because that's what we've been choosing, choosing to focus our efforts. So during, during a, a time of the day, there's a, there's a challenge. And during that challenge, if they are, if they are under the expected, the allotted amount of, you know, volume.
Interruptions?
Yeah, volume interruptions, side conversations or comments. If they're, if they're not redirected during that time, then there's an incentive. So the challenge we're facing is, one, making those incentives impactful, making sure the time that they're, that they're involved in this is a time where they need support. And so playing with where that time is and the length of that time has been, you know, that'll be ongoing as we, as we move forward, but it's going to take patience, and it's not, you know, this isn't perfect by any means yet, but it's trending positively, I can say with confidence.
Good.
Thank you.
One interesting thing, you've mentioned the volume. Two different people that hadn't been in that classroom said it's made at different times of the first day that they were observing, that the acoustics in that classroom are really difficult to hear. So we've put some technology in there that we're hoping will help with the acoustics of the, like the.
And pardon, that's, it was not a, designed to be a regular classroom.
Right.
It was designed from its inception to be a technology room. So it, you know, it was just put, put together a little bit differently. I'm not sure if that might have something to do with the acoustics. And we have used those Red Cats in other classrooms with students with, you know, hearing challenges.
Yeah.
Or to make sure that everybody hears.
What I think.
It projects, it's called a Red Cat. Basically, it's a speaker system. But basically, it's a speaker system that sends it out in FM, an FM broadcast of a large speaker, and it makes it easier for some kids who might have stimulus issues with loud voices, it sends it out much more evenly. Teachers who are using that will wear a microphone around their neck. It almost looks like a, a highlighter hanging around their neck and just makes it easier. We have a few that were purchased before I came here, actually, and they, they use periodically.
Great. They're often used for students with hearing impairments, but this is a system that, so that FM system is that the teacher wears a microphone, the student wears a bar itself. The Red Cats are a bar that amplifies for the whole class. Thank you.
Thank you. Student, Student Service Director's report.
So most of my report this month was on grants, because I've been working a lot on grants this past few months. That was important to update you on where we're at with grants.
Page 22, everybody.
This one's, 22, 23.
23.
So I don't know, did you all get a chance to read it? Do you just have questions for me? Do you want me to read it out to you, where we're at with these grants? What's your pleasure?
Well, so the amount budgeted and the amount of the allocation, why is there such a, well, yeah, why is there such a variance in that?
So the amount allocated is the amount that you get at the beginning of the start date, and the amount budgeted is the budgeted thus far. So you'll see on title, on the first grant, and I'm already realizing that's the one With, so you'll see on title, on the first grant, and I'm already realizing that's the one thing I didn't do was identify the name of the grants, sorry. So the first grant is Title One and we actually sub, um, it's submitted. And, um, we will submit again for, to bring it up to the total amount. It's kind of, grants are kind of a back and forth thing. You identify what your initial needs are, you submit that, it gets approved. And as you see your needs, you continue to submit and get approved.
Which ones, the IDEA?
IDEA is number, I, I, actually, I think this must have been cut off because I'm pretty sure I must have had this on there. The, the next two are IDEA. So you can see we're pretty close to budget on, um, the first grant. So IDEA changed two years ago and it's now a two-year grant. We get money every year, but it runs for two years. So, um, this first grant, twelve fifteen, two thousand seventeen to nine thirty, two thousand nineteen, we're pretty close to the end, to the budget of that. We'll, we'll figure out how, what we can purchase to make it complete so we spend every penny of it. The second IDEA is, it runs to nine thirty, two thousand twenty. So I always try to leave a little bit of money in IDEA for emergency purposes. So I think we have about a thou, uh, ten thousand in there right now, a little over ten thousand. But that doesn't close until September of two thousand twenty, so I can spend that next year along with what we get this spring for IDEA, which runs for two years. Are you following me?
Well, just so I'm clear, allocation is what we're receiving, budgeted is what we believe we need to spend.
Yes, so far, but we try our hardest to spend the total allocation.
Anne, can I, should like amount budgeted or should that say, uh, currently amount expended?
No, that's not budgeted.
Based on what you've written in the grant currently and that, that, you do that all the time.
Yeah.
You're always writing something, if I, if I ask you for a, a professional development, you say, oh, I can write a grant for that. So that's what we're talking, when you budget it, it's real what we're expending.
Right, right.
Okay.
The next one down, I'm really sorry that I didn't identify which grants these are. The next, um, one, two, three, fourth one down is the Title Two grant that we received in two thousand and eighteen. It two runs for two years. The begin date for that was eight fifteen, two thousand and eighteen because there was a lag between grant writers. There was no real person that would put in place to write grants, so there was a lag. So much of this, this twenty-nine thousand dollars that was allocated was, um, written last year by Chris and myself and then completed so that we can spend the rest of the money.
This year? Between now and...
That, this grant will close in, um, September of two thousand nineteen.
Right, so is there still ten left in it or?
Yes.
To spend?
Yes, but we haven't, I, I thought of what we're going to spend that ten thousand dollars on.
Carol.
You're gonna, okay, so I'm hearing some monies left over and you're gonna spend it, but it has a purpose. And the assurances from the superintendent to the grantor, sending out the, the grant is for specific purposes, is that correct?
Yes, in fact, um, last year we have, um, there was a, well, there's been a lot of federal changes in grant writing and we will bring to the board the general assurances, probably the first board meeting in June because the board now has to approve the general assurances. So that will come to you...
That's always been the function of the board.
Uh, just by the DOE, it was just, um, this board probably has been the function of the board, but by the DOE with the new commissioner, um, became a regulation. So that will come to you in June. And now, um, nothing can be approved of any of our annuaries until the board approves those assurances. So the, the ten thousand left in this, um, Title Two grant is, we're looking at, um, using that towards, um, bringing in a woman, Cynthia, Cynthia Merrill, who is a literacy specialist. And she's worked, both Jim and I have experience with her. She's worked in a former district with Jim and she's worked in, um, SAU nine where I used to work. Comes really highly, um, regarded and she's going to be doing, the first thing she'll do is a needs assessment as to what else, what she sees we need in terms of the workshop model, which is what, and Jim, you speak to this as well as me because you're the one who's asked to look at this. You're looking at wanting to put in place a literacy workshop model.
Yeah.
And, and so she's going to do this spring a needs assessment. And that's what, that, we'll use that ten thousand for. And then the other Title One, Two grant, which ends in... The one that says four six, two thousand nineteen, nine thirty, two thousand twenty, that thirty thousand will, a lot of that will go towards the literacy and math, um, curriculum. Ten twenty-four, two thousand seventeen, nine thirty, two thousand nineteen. That is, um, that grant, I know this was cut off because I remember writing that. That grant is what we call, um, our rural REAP is what it is.
REAP.
Rural Education, which is, um, a grant that we get for being a small community, basically.
Small rural community.
Small rural community. Um, we have used that money, um, for consultation, um, on our PBIS program and, um, purchasing the Swiss Behavioral Data System, which is really going to be helpful in us looking at our data and helping our data drive our decision-making with regards to our behavior interventions.
And the PB...
Yeah.
Go ahead.
The PBIS consultation is, so we have, if you look around our school, you see like over here on the wall, we have our behavior matrix. It, it has impact, it shows what the expectations of the school are. We want to update, re-energize and revamp and make it a little more, uh, kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade friendly. And so when you, when you walk down our hallways, you should know, when you're in the hall, the expectation is X and that should be painted all over the wall. When you're in our cafeteria, the expectations are X and that should be all over our cafeteria. So we, we wanted to bring support to help us make that vision, uh, reality here. So that's, that's really important. That's he, that's smart money, in my opinion.
Great.
Yep.
The fifth line down, the fifteen thousand dollars, we spent eight thousand of it. That's where we brought Dr. Smith in. And that, the remainder of that money is what we'll, um, use to help build our social emotional, um, curriculum. The last one is this coming, is the, is this year's, um, REAP grant. And, um, Jerry's asked me to look into trying to, um, look into strategic planning through that grant. So basically, we have about eighty-three thousand dollars that we haven't spent that is going to pretty much be focused on math and literacy, coaching and instruction, um, best practice, professional development and some social emotional learning. The competitive grant that we, um, put in, which is the last one, we have not heard anything about that. It's, um, a competitive ti, it, it comes from Title Two, but it's a competitive grant that was just, um, a month and a half ago was shared with everyone. So Jen and I put our heads together, Jen surveyed the math people in the building and what we're looking at trying to do is build and train the trainer model where we train some teachers this summer that can, should be working, um, at developing a professional skill and plan for the year for, um, math instruction.
Jen, do I need to even ask it?
I know exactly what you're gonna ask.
I know you are.
We want to be able to make sure that the math professional development that we're doing and the literacy professional development we're doing is reaching all children, children that...
Even a little bit further, I still don't understand. We talked about like probably my very first board meeting, about grants specifically for above average or advanced kids. And you said that they were out there, but we still don't have any. I mean, I, I, I understand that some of these are for everybody, but several of these are for kids who need, you know, special ed or, you know, homeless and ABA tutor stuff.
The only two grants in here that I think are, um, three, Title One and IDEA are specific to, um...
So, but is, I guess my question here is, are there not any out there that are specific to the kids who need to be challenged?
No, there aren't federal funding, well, let me take that back. The two, um, the grant, the eight thousand dollar grant, there's a section in it that you, um, are supposed to dedicate to kind of enrichment and there's a section you're supposed to dedicate to technology and there's a section you're supposed to dedicate to, um, school, school climate. So that, um...
This is the one that's not, uh, this is the...
Right.
One that's not cited.
I, I have to preface though, these are the federal grants that we get.
Mm-hmm.
There was never in any planning someone assigned to do grant writing. So Chris did some grant writing and then handed it over to me to do grant writing. So this is in addition to what the Student Service job description is, so to...
Is that a, a, a long way of saying it's not my job?
It's not, I love, to be quite frank to you Jen, I love doing it, but researching competitive grants, which is what you're asking us to do, is research competitive grants, is going to take a little bit of work between us to see...
Didn't we have someone that was researching grants and, so, so side one, and no offense intended here, but side one, didn't we have somebody? And side two is, okay, is this, shouldn't take someone to bring it up over and over again, that, yeah, it's going to take some work. It's, it's a job that needs to be filled in our school system to make sure there's money for, for, um, kids who are not needing IEP. I mean, everything, on this report, you've got the number of kids who have disabilities and the number of kids with a five oh four plan. How about the number of kids who, you know, got high honors? And, ooh, we might need to challenge them a little bit. Yeah, it's, it's work, but these kids, their future relies on the base that we give them at Paul School and it's not fair for the kids who are average and above to not get any of the effort of the grants and the grant writer or whomever to help them achieve their goals as well. It's not just achieving goals, bringing somebody up from below average to average, it's taking the people who can go further and giving them the education they deserve as well. I'm frustrated, I've been talking about this for more than a year and there's still nothing.
I, I, I guess I don't agree with you that there's still nothing because the literacy and the math, um, professional development that we're bringing in is looking at all...
So it covers everybody and then there's several that cover the kids who are challenged. And there's nothing specifically for the kids who are higher. You know, level wise, however, I, the PC way to say that. It just seems like we are a school that is here to serve everybody's needs. We don't just have to focus on struggling. We have to focus on the kids who, we're going to lose their love for school. We're gonna, they're gonna get in trouble there because they have nothing else to do because they sleep in class or they just don't get the challenge that they need. We need somebody to find grants to get, bring money into the school for those kids. And it's the same, I've, it's frustrating. It, it seems like Paul School just doesn't care about the kids who excel.
I don't agree.
Like, I'm, I'm, I have a kid in seventh grade and every year I've been in here, it's why I ran for the school board to begin with. Every year I go and I see the teachers, I'll grant you, this year I didn't have to. I am very pleased with seventh grade. But every year I'd come and I'd say to the teacher, what can I do to help you challenge my kid? And there's never anything there. And you knew what I was gonna say because I keep saying it and nobody responds to it. It's very frustrating.
What else do you have, Anne?
Um, well, the, the Student Service report that I typically do does give you just the numbers and where we're at with, um, special ed numbers and five oh four numbers. They are not changing at all. They pretty much stand like, special ed is right about twenty percent, um, of our population. And, um, I will clean up this document because it is missing a column and make sure you guys have the document with the, with the column. And I just wanted to tell you that, um, I'm kind of excited. I was just accepted into a, um, pretty competitive scholar program for, um, trauma-informed practice and policy. So I'm really excited for the Paul School because I think it's going to be really helpful for us with our school on culture and climate.
Congratulations.
That was competitive as well.
Hmm?
Competitive as well.
It was very competitive, yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I'm just hopeful that, I, I, I talked a lot about using Paul School at that, my little research.
I was excited. You said ten out of sixty, I think, is that what you said?
Um, the first cohort was ten, there were sixty, I think.
Wow, terrific.
All business, um, transportation equipment and computer equipment.
Sure. Um, do you have that? Marie has a handout for you.
It's a throw out, really.
Thank you.
Shaking my cards.
Sorry.
Make a paper, I'm playing out of women's.
Send them over to you.
So what you have in front of you is, um, we took bids on four vehicles, a two thousand nine seventy-seven passenger bus, a two thousand nine thirty passenger wheelchair bus, a two thousand ten Dodge Caravan, a two thousand six Chevy Impala. Uh, we opened the bids, Marie and I, yesterday in the SAU at four o'clock. Uh, and the bids are, as you see in front of you. Uh, the only caveat I have is, Jim, and I'll have you speak to this a little bit. Uh, it's on the two thousand six Chevy Impala. Do you just wanna?
Yeah, so Jen and I, Jen and I were speaking the other day about like, we're always thinking about how do, you know, how do we, what do we do to make Paul School better? What can we do outside of the box to make our school better in the way that we run and do things better? And it was a, a specific incident with, um, there were two students that were having an issue and we're like, what do we do? Like, this student thinks that the, the other student is responsible for the tension. This student thinks that the other student is responsible for the tension. Parents are the same way, think that the other student is responsible for the tension. So like, there is no one side to, to consequence aggressively. And so what do you do? And so like, what, what outside of the box thing can we do? And I was like, at, at a former school, we would take and we would do like, uh, like service field trips. So what if, what if these two students went and did community service at the Rochester Manor together and, and that was a, like, a field trip led by our assistant principal who could then drive there in the vehicle? And it just started like this outside of the box conversation. So there are other students that go home, watch Netflix or play video games and come back to school and they're not cultured, they don't go to the library, they don't go on hikes. So this, I'm thinking that this vehicle could be, uh, our vehicle to, to make these small trips that could potentially have impact so that they're, they're growing and they're learning and they're coming back to school with, uh, you know, more world experience. Jen?
If you do that, I think you need to make sure that you are not just rewarding bad behavior, but rewarding good behavior as well. Because historically, the kids notice when the one kid who acts up gets to go play basketball and they all want to act up and go play basketball. It's been, the culture of this school has been in, in years past, reward bad behavior. And I think that you need to keep that in mind when you have two kids who, and I don't know what the situation is, know nothing about them, but may be disrupting a school day for each other or others and rewarding them. I'm not a fan.
Sure.
Anne, Jim and I had a conversation about this this morning and, and my thought on it was, I think, I, I love the idea of having some civic-minded, um, activities for our students outside of the school. Um, and, you know, my, my suggestion was to, you know, how do we do this for all of our eighth graders? And saying, you know, what do we, how do we make sure that we are, there, there is some kind of community service? And the service is something other than self, is how I like to put it. So I, I think kind of falls on what you're saying, Jen, is not just, not just the students that are having their struggle. That's what prompted the, the discussion. But, you know, I think we're looking at more than just a couple of kids.
You need to be careful that it's not just kids who are acting up.
I like the idea of, of making it not a requirement because, you know, we, again, some parents may say, no, I don't want my kid going down to the manor. I don't want my kid going off and doing something like this, but...
The rec has recently had a, a group of kids going to the shelter, animal shelter.
I just like the idea of some civic-minded stuff out of the school and I think that kind of lines up what we've been talking about around civility and empathy and things of that nature. I think it really falls in line well with that.
But the, the...
Go ahead.
The thinking too was that if we sell the vehicle for whatever amount we're able to get for it, we lose... But the, the, the thinking too was that if we sell the vehicle for whatever amount we're able to get for it, we lose uh the availability of that vehicle. Or the accessibility of that vehicle.
How many does it seat?
It's a car.
Probably five, probably five people, I mean, probably three in the back and the front.
Tracy?
I, I had a similar thought also, just in case there was a need to run to Long Meadow or something like that.
Ralph?
Um, so if I may, uh, I'd like to make, uh, create a, a motion to award the seventy seven passenger uh bus to Janice Townsend in the amount of twenty-six hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Uh, award the um Seacoast Learning Collaborative, the eighteen passenger Thomas Bus in the amount of three thousand dollars.
That's a thirty passenger, is it not bus eighteen?
It says eighteen passenger. Oh, no, wait.
No, just bus eighteen, bus eighteen, thirty passengers.
Okay, I'm sorry, thank you for claiming.
Make sure we're clear on, yeah, yes, sir.
Um, so that's a thir- three thousand dollar bid or offer on that. The Dodge Caravan, I, I'd recommend the board award Janice Townsend that at eight hundred and thirty-one dollars. And I would certainly recommend to the board that they hold onto that Chevy Impala for other purposes. Especially looking at the value of it and the, the bids on it, uh, they're falling short of a, just a trade in value. It certainly has. Um, and, and that's it for my motion, there's maybe somebody else.
Oh, no, no, I'll second it.
Any more discussion on the motion in a second? Any more discussion? Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Okay, he's good.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Thank you. Maybe somebody else wants to address the vendor bid on the, on the.
Do you wanna speak to that, Jerry?
Technology.
The two bids for the technology.
Sure. The um, when we put this out initially, we didn't request sealed bids. One came in as an email, one came in as sealed. We, but we did not request it, you know, we did not make the sealed until we started doing the vehicles, but one came in sealed, so.
Okay, doesn't matter.
Doesn't, doesn't matter, I'm just letting you know that.
Uh, I'll, I'll make a motion to give the ubiquity technology equipment to Stephen Polisi.
Seven. I second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
School Board Committee meeting scheduled.
That is on page nineteen of your agenda.
And there is a correction out here somewhere.
There is a correction.
Yeah, I got one. Okay, is that the one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that is. The correction on that is it has um under curriculum assessment, Tracy, Jen and Jerry, and it's actually Tracy and Bob and Jerry.
Um, and then on the curriculum, that's, that's Tracy, Bob and Jerry on curriculum assessment.
Oh, you, you have the updated version.
Technology, I am, can't do that because it's during the day.
Okay.
Yep.
That's, and then again, the ones that don't have a frequency in day is because that's a building level or it's more, um, you know, like the wellness and technology are, and PD are building level, negotiation budget and, and health are um part of the negotiates, the negotiations. So that's not open. Health benefits are part of negotiation as well and that's not open. Budget will happen per the budget committee. But those, when we become aware of those dates and times, we'll certainly post those and make people aware. Any quick, yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry, uh, the, I was just curious about the date of the um.
First Tuesday?
Yeah, or the second Tuesday, so that would be the fourteenth and we have a workshop.
Okay.
Um, at five thirty. Do you wanna do it at five? The workshop's at five thirty.
We certainly can. Just a, just a, a, a planning meeting, yeah, sure.
Yes, just a half, five, five to five thirty, okay.
What, what is it, I'm sorry?
Wait a minute, the workshop's at five.
The workshop is at five. Oh, I'm sorry, I have five thirty in here.
Are, are we having the right to know who are on the first Tuesday?
Oh, that's the, that is.
June fourth.
June fourth.
At five o'clock.
That's the first Tuesday.
This is the second on this.
No, but this is on the facilities one.
We're not, we're not talking about facilities.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Tracy.
Can you do four thirty?
I could do four, four thirty, yeah.
Okay, so.
Four thirty's fine.
So when, when are these starting? It says first and third, so.
Well, it starts as of now. It's, it's, you know, when that you have the schedule, it'll start. So we're, we're talking at this point, um, but we have the.
The policy one is gonna be.
The policy will be on the first and third Monday.
Ralph, what do you got?
We start on the third?
I just, um, thinking back a few meetings ago, uh, Jen, are you still on the negotiation team?
Yep.
Okay.
I just can't do that one during the day with the school, they need in the library.
I remember when we voted on the contract, I thought you'd said you were off that, but that if you're still on it, that's good.
So we will put the schedule out on the website in the school foyer with the actual dates on there. Right now, this is just for your purposes, instead of having a big sheet here, but really this is the, what you can expect unless it's otherwise noted. The meetings will start at five o'clock as um, as it states at the bottom of that, that form, uh, unless otherwise noted, we'll be here in the school library.
Okay.
Okay.
Tracy?
I raised my hand. So the next one that, uh, for policy, it would be.
The third Monday.
Okay, all right, third Monday, okay, thank you.
Yeah, we started on that.
Okay.
Other questions?
All right. Still on the old business, um, this isn't on your um agenda at all, but um, we, last meeting, we had a policy change, which we need to make, change the policy. Of changing our meetings to six o'clock. Uh, so in our policy, it's five o'clock, so I need somebody to make a motion to change the policy to.
Do you have a policy, do you have the policy letters anywhere?
I said, yeah.
Policy letters?
No.
No.
I mean, I could probably find it in here, but, but.
Just wanted to make it clear that we have to change the policy.
Which we will.
We have, we have, yeah, the first policies we'll address will be the ones that are pressing in regard to.
But do we have to change this one to, to continue the six o'clock meeting?
Or is it just posted?
Uh, we probably should change the policy.
Okay, so being the.
We probably should have the policy.
You think so?
Okay, it has been posted correctly.
Yeah, it's been posted, but we, we need to change the policy.
Can we put that on the next agenda?
Sure we can.
With the letters?
Yes, we're sorry.
Sorry, that's fine. I, I just wanna make sure it's done correctly, that's all.
Let me ask this, and I'll just ask this of like Tracy and Jen, are you okay with me amending that and bringing that in without you? Would you, would you like to be involved in that? I'm just gonna change the time.
I bet it is.
Okay, and I'll bring it in for a first reading. I'll bring it for a first reading at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Yep.
New business, uh, Wakefield School Board Scholarship.
I'm just gonna hand out to you the scholarships, I'm gonna get them on the agenda, I'll hand those around. Those are the three scholarships that were presented and will, if you would take a look at them, um. Thank you. Those do not have names on them. We have had staff look at them, uh, recommendation, but if you wanna take a look at them first and.
So what we discussed about this, we'll take these home with you and have some homework and we'll discuss this next, next meeting.
Absolutely.
Okay. Looking forward to that.
National History Day, Washington DC trip.
Sure, I think that's what everybody's here for, actually. Everybody's here to talk about that.
They wait.
So we have typically paid for at least um Mr. Soul to go down for his airfare, uh, room and board, um, his trip, his trip down. So we've typically taken that out of professional development money, um, for his professional development. So, and I would ask that be allowed as well for this trip.
So I'm motioning that we allow the cost of the chaperone teacher to have his expenses come out of the.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
So it's, that doesn't draw down every penny of his professional development.
I would say, you know, again, right now we have twenty thousand dollars. I don't expect the twenty thousand dollars to be expended between now and the end of the year.
But that's not, that's not.
And I would not, I would not, I would not, I think this should not come out of like his portion. Um, and again, since we have, you know, twenty thousand dollars left, because this is against, I think this is something that we want the community to participate in, to see this happen, and I don't want, I don't want this to have an impact on other professional development opportunities that Mr. Soul would have.
Yeah, okay, okay, so then, I think that's answering my question. I'm just, you're talking about money that has not been expended via professional development.
Yes, sir.
And allowing it to be spent on this particular part of the program, which.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, I understand that.
Any other discussion? Tracy?
Yeah, I don't wanna discourage any other teacher from going out of their way and doing something like this for our kids at Wakefield.
Is it just one teacher going?
Mr. Soul, it's just you heading down, correct?
Uh, ju- just me and some, and some parents that.
Right, but it's a T, we're talking as a teacher.
They're also appreciate uh some attention on, on that, that financial card.
Financial attention, you mean?
I feel, I feel bad you started with me, which I admire and appreciate, but I, my priority is.
Yeah.
Is, is, is the kiddos for, for sure, so I'd love to see the attention turned to that side of things.
We can discuss that now.
With all due respect.
I would defer to the chair.
So he's asking it.
He's asked it, cause it made the assistance, any assistance from the school board, I have asked, you know, in years past would be a, a budget item. Uh, and I've, I've always thrown out the number of twenty-five hundred to assist the families in doing this. What happens is they end up finding out so late in the year, um, if they're going to be going, uh, if they're being selected for the nationals, that there, it really shortens the window of fundraising. It makes it very challenging and, and it's an expensive trip.
Comments? Tracy?
I want the Wakefield kids to go.
Is this, is this the, so I was getting confused. This is the thing that they won, that they worked so hard for. It's not the class trip.
It's not the class trip, this is the NHD.
I was getting it confused, okay?
No, this is, no, there, that's all taken care of.
They earned this. They scored high, they made it to nationals, guys.
Mm-hmm.
What's, do you know what the cost is?
If for one parent and one student, it's about fifteen hundred dollars.
Holy moly.
Each student has to pay a hundred and fifty dollar registration fee just to participate, and then it's room, floor, transportation.
Ralph?
So that twenty-five hundred that you're suggesting, um, Jerry, is also coming out of the professional development line?
I have, what I said was that I've always made that request for it to be a budget item of twenty-five hundred dollars to defray those costs of fundraising.
How many kids are going? Five kids and five parents?
Okay, just.
Is that right, one parent per kid?
The um twenty thousand dollar line item that the superintendent's speaking to is for, that line is based on contractual agreements for staff. That's what that line is for. It's, it's dedicated, that line is budgeted for staff professional development. So it, so we have nothing else budgeted for parents and students to go on these trips in the current budget. So the board can do what they want, I just want them to be clear.
Do they fundraise for that too?
There is some fight, I, I expect that Mr. Soul is already planning some fundraising.
Yeah, we, uh, we met tonight and we have two or three, uh, and you know, and we're still in the early stages, but we got, we got a few weeks here. We got um hoping to set up a benefit dinner at a restaurant through town. The girls are gonna do some tagging at some local businesses, uh, to, to talk about the trip and the competition itself and to ask for money. And it's looking like we're, we're looking at Pride, Pride Day, perhaps operating a booth or a bake sale or a raffle of, of some kind. So, you know, it's worth noting, you know, work is being done to defray these costs, but it's, who've already worked hard for their class trip as well. Um, the, the big thing that Mr. Gregoire commented on that I wanna make sure is known, that part of this is, you know, April thirteenth was the state competition. So April thirteenth was when they were alerted that, hey, this is great, amazing educational opportunity in the nation's capital. We, we as students and parents wanna work towards it with Mr. Soul. Registration due next Tuesday, so the window to do real work on this was like three and a half weeks. Um, and then obviously the trip is in June, so we'll, we'll work up until June and then that's on top of their regular activities. Cause they're hardworking, uh, students, you know, just to, just to give you guys kind of that full scope of the, of the project.
And how many, how many students are there?
So we have five students going, representing three projects that won first place or second place at the state competition. Competing against thirty other New Hampshire schools and about four hundred other kids.
Ralph?
Earlier on the agenda, we sold some vehicles and I don't know if that would fall under unanticipated revenue or not. But I, I, I'd like to offer a motion to the board to um.
Can you, can you stop, Marie, is that, is that proper? That goes back to general fund, doesn't it?
Well, my understanding is when we put the warrant on, well, um, warrant article amount for the new vehicles was reduced based on using some of this funds, just something like that.
I remember that, I remember that, they made it.
All right, so Marie, where can we get the money from?
Well, I had a good idea.
You did, it was, it was a good idea. I loved it.
You know, there's still time, Mr. Soul, correct, if we were to, if we were to bring this back to the table, the SAU?
I think uh these students and their families have, have shown the hard work and patience necessary to continue to, to raise birds.
Well, you're gonna do some fundraising. Uh, it'll give us some time here for you to do that fundraising and then we can figure out where that money could come from, um, that would be proper.
Uh, I believe somebody uh contacted the board and we asked them to come to the, uh, to get on the agenda and come to the meeting about um a GoFundMe page, I think. I, I don't know, I just wanna make sure whoever's here, if they wanted to.
So we did set up a GoFundMe page to split amongst the five students, um, and it's currently at three hundred and seventy dollars. So we've paid for two and a little to register right now.
And I believe there was also a donation that was made as well?
Oh, yes.
So we've, we've posted it a couple places around town and I think we could post it on some of the websites and I have flyers if anybody wants to post it anywhere else.
Ralph?
If it's legal and proper, I'll donate my entire stipend to the project.
Wow, that's awesome.
Tax free.
Another question of them. Did you get a donation from anybody in town already or anything like that or?
The Lions Club also has made a separate donation from that GoFundMe.
Super, oh, that's great.
I believe, I, I believe that was made directly to the SAU and, and the NHD students.
Yes.
Honor, so.
From the Lions Club?
And there's some other folks that are, uh, there are certainly, there's some other potentials out there that would, that would be for sure.
You wanna do it, what do you wanna do?
Yeah, Lions, let her go to the Lions Club and so.
Yes.
Yep.
Do we, can we vote, like to be looking for, I mean, do we all agree? Do we wanna know what the premise is here, that we all agree? That we wanna find this money somewhere? Because this is one of those things where we can support the kids who are above average.
I, I, I think we can, I think I can probably draw our consensus from the discussion here at the table without having to go for a vote. You can make a vote at the next meeting if we are, find a place where that money can come from. Would that be proper, Marie?
Are you asking me?
Yes.
Not, not sure we're gonna get it all, but.
Yep.
Um, so the board is, is, um, has, so there is a co-curricular activity fund, I mean, uh, um, yeah, function. Um, we don't budget for that, but obviously, even though we don't budget for it, the board of, would want to vote that in there, that line would just go over. So that we would, we would, if, if it goes over, it would be a, uh, indicated that we need to look at that in the future.
Okay. Is there any of the kids here, you know, that's going?
Yeah, they're all, yeah, those are.
If you're going, could you stand up?
Nice, nice job, guys. I actually wanna donate a hundred dollars towards it myself.
Yeah, I'll make my donation as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll, we'll look into that, we'll, we'll come back, we'll come back with a number for you, um, at the next meeting.
Uh, Ms. Lynn, can I apologize for being rude? If we want to send money for the kids, do we send it care of the school? Drop off a check here, what's the procedure? send it care of the school? Drop off a check here? What's the procedure?
The GoFundMe page, you could answer.
Can I make a comment?
Uh, I would, I would say-
Would suggest that you actually write a check to Paul School for a specific purpose, and it would go into a student activity account for that specific purpose. And, and so this cannot be used for anything else other than that.
Can you, can you just send me, you know, on that purpose of that?
Well, the purpose of this fund, for the, for the raise, fundraising for this purpose.
Just to, just to write it out right?
Okay, perfect.
You got to say?
You're welcome.
I was gonna say the same thing, you know.
Again, congratulations, you guys, really did a great, great job.
Congrats.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
See, last day of school.
Last day of school. A big question that I hear, every time I bump into, almost every time I bump into a parent, what's the last day of school, teachers, what's the last day of school? So, you know, we had a, an abundance of snow days this year, we had, and a water day, and had to explain what a water day is to some people, when the, the town pump goes. Well, it wasn't frozen, it was just that-
It failed.
It failed, so we didn't have school that day. Now, we can look at two things, we can count days, at a hundred and eighty days, or we can count hours. Now, because we are a, we are a K-eight school, we have two groups that we need to meet. We need to have nine hundred and ninety hours for middle school, and we have nine hundred and forty-five hours for elementary. Despite-
Can't, can't split the school up?
Well, it's okay, I mean, we have plenty of hours, you know, there, you know, you have, you know, between our delayed openings, you have to count those as, you know, hours, and you have to, you know, how many days we actually have, and how much time we have academically, so you don't count lunchtime as academic time, although you do count recess as academic time. So in that, our hours for elementary are nine hundred and eighty-two and a half.
As of when?
As of, at the end of the year, if we don't have any snow days between now and-
What day are you counting the end of the year?
Oh, excuse me, Friday, June twenty-first.
Oh, that's better than I thought.
Uh, well, the other day would be the twenty, if we went all the way, a hundred and eighty days, it would take us to June twenty-seventh, which is a period of time, and they really, honestly, at that time, these walls will be sweating with four hundred and eighty kids in the building. There will be condensation dripping off the walls.
So how many will we have, the same for the-
For middle school, we will have one thousand and twenty-six hours. So, again, we need nine hundred and ninety for middle school, nine forty-five for elementary. So what I'm requesting from the board is permission to put out the parents, that we would have, the last day of school will be a half-day on Friday, June twenty-first, and that would allow us to start planning also, because we need to plan end of the year award day, we need to plan kindergarten graduation, if, yeah, ceremony, and our eighth grade graduation.
Why do we, why are we keeping such an abundance of extra hours? Why don't we cut it right down? I mean, we need nine hundred and forty-five hours, you're gonna have nine hundred and eighty-two.
Well, I, I, you know, again, I, I think it's good that we have the abundance of hours, I mean, if we, if we pared it down to the bare minimum, and we had six, five snow days and one rain, a water day, then we're gonna be in trouble, because we will be-
We're more dangerous in water day than we are stuffy in this one.
Well, so again, and, and again, academically, we certainly need all the time we can possibly get.
Trying to put safety net.
It is a safety net, it's pretty typical, and again, I think we want to make sure we have as much time with our students as possible, we certainly want to raise our scores, and by cutting the time, it is not, it's not-
Good answer.
Again, I, I was, I was uncertain if I was gonna bring this to you, because again, you know, the reality is, is much I'd love to come in, I said this to you last year at the, at the board, as much I'd love to come and tell you, we're gonna grind it out to the very end on June twenty-seventh. The reality is, the conditions won't allow that. The conditions aren't very challenging at the end of the year.
Because you already have them starting in August, right?
We do, uh, yeah.
Ralph?
So, the graduation dates for kindergarten and eighth grade depend on the, the last day of school?
Well, I mean, you, you could, but I don't want to have graduation for eighth grade a week before school's out. We usually do it a day and a half, or about a day, one day?
Three days.
Three days?
Yeah, eighth grade.
Yeah, see, and then the kindergarten as well. We, we also start kindergarten, you probably don't remember this maybe, but we also start kindergarten a day early. We give them, at the beginning of the year, we start them before all the kids come in, so that it's less intimidating for them.
So the crying parents don't run through both the kids in the parking lot?
They move to a building, and they, they know, they get away in the land a little better without everybody else being in here.
So you need a motion to have the official declaration of June twenty-first?
Yes, sir.
Final half-day of school?
Yes, sir.
That'd be my motion.
I second it.
Want us, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I think that's a week before you guys expected, right?
It's gonna be a little cooler, for sure.
Okay. The Soul's discussion.
Joe?
Joe, you're up.
Want to come join us? That doesn't matter.
Well, you know, I think it's good for you to be on camera once in a while.
This is back to us.
Pick a good side.
So... Our electric contract is up for the supply side of things. We currently use the company, Constellation, which is out of Houston, Texas, for our supply side. This did not make it into the packet, but I-
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's not your packet. I have it there, but... So the price sheet on the, it was point eight, point zero eight-five cents per kilowatt. I called Eversource, and they are point zero nine nine eight-five, so they're ten cents. Constellation is at, like, eight cents. So, over the course of our kilowatts that we use, I mean, our electric bill's fifty thousand dollars a year.
How much?
Around fifty thousand a year.
Yep.
So, so we need- So, with, by having this contract, this is one of the best deals out there for them, and they guarantee us that price for three years. So I just want to bring this to you guys, let you know that if, like, you move forward by moving that over and signing it and getting it down to those guys.
Do you know what the savings is?
Uh, not off the top of my head, maybe substantial. If it was ten cents a kilowatt hour, it would, yeah, two cents saving on the kilowatt. Two cents per kilowatt, and we would have to-
Town.
Town?
Yeah, we've been talking for a few years about getting the school in the town to get on the same electric contract, to try to get a better price. Is there any movement on that, is trying to get the town and the school to get in?
Joe, have you looked at anything like that?
I haven't talked to anybody down level. That's the first I've heard of that.
Tracy?
Oh, I was gonna ask you if you're happy with their service, Constellation.
Lights are on.
That's what I mean, they don't flicker, they don't get interrupted, the things that would disturb the kids, so this was my point. So that's who you're using now?
Everything's been good.
It's who you're using now, if they're cheaper.
Ralph? Joe, can you get me the information on how many kilowatts per month we're using? Because I, I would like to know the feasibility of taking that property over on Rhine's Road, doing a whole tree harvest on it, setting up some panels that might generate enough power to pay the electric bill here at Paul School.
We've looked into doing a roof unit here at Granite State Solocamo, and the initial investment on that was about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
There must be some grants, right?
Or, or six years' worth of electric. So, feasibility, it's kind of worth it.
Yep.
Because once it's paid for, it's just generating money.
And with that, and-
Fifty thousand a year.
It's quite possible that, that-
You could sell some off.
The property over there would have more panels than this building could, you know, utilize. So it might be a, a larger initial investment, but the return may be larger as well.
I, I know at one point, there was talk with the, when the town in Milton did theirs.
At the transfer, at the landfill?
Landfill, that, there. There was talk about them coming up here and doing kind of a similar thing over on our landfill. I'm not sure what the numbers are, but that could be a phone call to the town to see how much energy that does create.
Well, I mean, I'd like the information, I don't know if anybody else would, but I'd certainly share it if you got it to me.
Yeah, I can get all of that. Yeah, the sooner we have that information, the better, if we're gonna, if you, something really, you want to look at is a bunch of-
I mean, seriously, if it's a, even if it's a half a million dollar project, that's a ten-year investment, you start getting it back.
Right, and a lot of the times, you'll make enough energy that it goes right back into the grids, during the winter time, you don't have an electric bill.
Right. Tracy?
Also, if you could check with the town, oh, and is there a time crunch? Are they expecting us to sign the new contract, Constellation, anytime soon?
They, they would like that signed, yeah.
Yesterday?
But will they still provide it until we do?
Excuse me?
Will they still provide electricity until we do, if we put it up for a little bit? Mm-hmm.
They guarantee this price. We're still good until, we have a little bit of time until the contract runs out, it actually runs out in November, but we're just taking and getting everything situated now, and that, that's gonna lock us in at that price.
Right, in November, that price is not guaranteed anymore.
No.
So I have a comment. This is great conversation to have during budget time. The initial investment is two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. I've already bought it. So, that needs, I mean, it's gonna take time-
Fundraising. GoFundMe.
Just, just making, just making an observation. I, I understand it's a great opportunity to do that, but it has to go through a process, and if we're gonna put it as a warrant article, it's gonna not occur until March.
I think it's great to talk about it now, and pre-plan and understand those deadlines.
What Marie is getting at is, we really need to sign the contract, and then make that saving, so we don't lose that locked-in price.
Right, got it, that was helpful.
I'll second her motion.
Okay.
I don't think she made a motion.
So we need to remove that.
Is that, is that subject done? No?
Well, you, I, I would like a, a vote to approve, so I can sign this contract.
Is it a three, three-year contract?
It's locked into three years, that, that price.
Do we have to do a three-year? I mean, that's what the, the contract is, I take it.
Can we wait and, and somebody look into that? I mean, I think that's a great idea with Soul, so.
See if you could maybe-
At least know about it.
Maybe see if you could get a two-year versus three, because it's gonna take two years to get the vote and get the process going.
Right, right. So I'll make the motion that Joe's seeking, to approve signing the contract, so we can lock in the rate for the next three years, because it will take some time for the town to decide.
Yep.
I second.
Second. Any more discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I, what we're talking about electric right now, can, what's the water department debacle gonna cost the school for extra? I see that their rates went up a hundred percent, a little more than two percent?
Three.
Three percent, sorry, a little bit more than three percent. And I wonder what that's gonna cost us? How, how is that gonna affect our budget? Do we know?
It was in the manifest, we, we just did about, from quite a bit, I think, for water.
The water?
The manifest had water in it quite a bit.
Didn't the water, didn't the water costs go up a hundred percent, and backdate, and get a new due date, and all this?
Two or three thousand dollars.
Have we been approved of that, have we been informed of that yet?
I hit the, uh, Facebook page.
For the Facebook page, I'm just saying-
From the water department, though, official-
Yeah, it's the blue pa, it's the- I know, but I want to see what we're budgeting at.
Yeah, we don't follow-
Oh, you don't have to pay what everybody else does?
We don't follow the water, I don't, we don't, as an entity, follow the water department's Facebook page.
Oh, it got posted out in one of the, wait, the field pages?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that we've seen it yet.
Yeah, well, I, I believe-
He's supposed to communicate from the water department.
Yeah, give, give me a little leeway on what it was exactly, but I believe a hundred percent increase, right, or something like that?
So today, we're approximately close to four thousand dollars over budget, and that's including what we, we would pay for, but I don't know if the utilization has changed, and that's something we'd have to look at, because you get, you get charged based, based on the gallon of-
So you didn't get a notification in the office that the rates were going up? The only thing you did was hit Facebook with it?
I did, I did, no, I, did you get anything? I didn't get anything.
Oh, I think we've gotten those bills.
Yeah, there was a notification that the, that the water that's already been used, I believe the rate, I don't have it, so, but I read it on Facebook, it was from Mr. Casperzic, that it was going up a hundred percent, and it backdated, and I wondered how that was gonna affect our budget, and-
Backdated to when?
I don't know exactly.
Nineteen fifty-two.
I just wonder about those poor people that are on a fixed budget, that only raise their income three percent in a year, and that's why they can't have a school budget increase of over three percent in the line, but the water department rate can go up a hundred percent?
I know, I lived it.
All right, we all set here?
Well, no, I want to know how that affected the budget. Are, are we looking into it? We're gonna have to plan differently, because we've got the budget set.
We'd have to look at the whole, at the whole budget, yeah, every line.
Yeah, it's gonna, so.
And if we get twenty-eight hundred people in town to donate a hundred dollars, we can finally get a force field.
By a force field?
By a force field?
Yeah.
Oh, right.
Chair, do you have more? I do. So, in your agenda here, I believe it's in the last couple pages there.
Page twenty-four?
Twenty-four. So, there's gonna be some renovations. This was done when Buck and Tyree was here. They've been looking for more room, and this was like, about the only thing that we could come up with for utilizing space. As you guys know, you go out into the activity center right now, and it's a debacle out there, it's a catch-all for stuff. There's teachers out there teaching, that's the hell of a teacher's classroom. She's on a cart, so she, that's our storage. We've talked about doing this with special ed, and if you look at page twenty-five, this is a plan that I came up with. These numbers were very rough numbers by me, just to get something to the superintendent for the budget committee. I do have this going out to quote right now, with a couple of different people, but I'm just worried about with the budget that we're in right now, going out to the newspaper for an RFP, looking at the timeline, trying to get everything lined up to get this to happen, because it's probably gonna be that first week after the July fourth week, to get people in here to start construction. So I was gonna ask if it'd be the will of the board, if we were to use the contractor that we used for out of the SAU, as far as the electrical and the building goes, as long as the pricing was in, within the ramifications of what we're looking at here. The other, the one hard number that I did get back so far was superior fire, because we do need to take and move the sprinkler systems in each room. The electrical, now, you can read what's there, it's gonna be new LED lights up there, metal framing, then we'll have to take the metal framing, have the electricians come in, painters, so on and so forth.
Ralph?
I think, Joe, by policy, we'd have to put out the bid because of the numbers. I, I appreciate what you're saying, as far as working with contractors, it's certainly helped us on the SAU building. Actually even returned some money to us, but I think we have a policy that if it's like over three thousand dollars, we couldn't even beat the bid.
Can that just go out to quote? Can I get three quotes on that, or do we have to do the, the three papers? Because the papers are up almost to a thousand dollars.
I think if, I, I think the way things have evolved, if we have an electronic place, like a website, like a, a Facebook page, or a website, or something like that, if it's posted there, that is one place to comply with the law, if it's used on a regular basis. And another place would be, whether it's at the town hall bulletin board, or the bulletin board out here in, in the thing, in the hallway, or at the post office, there has to be one other posting in a public place, because the school's a public place, the town hall's a public place, the post office is a public place. That would meet the criteria for the law, to comply with the law. I don't know of a policy that states anything different than, you know, to be publicly noted or duly noted. There is a slight cost to newspapers, but there's also, you put it on Craigslist for nothing, or whatever, I mean, there's social media out there that a lot of hungry contractors are looking at.
Use it for good.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that was, I think that is how our policy reads, I remember, I think we stopped enforcing the paper.
Yeah.
It was just too expensive.
It's just, we have a bid, we're going out to RFP, and spending that extra money, that extra money with the RFP, when, I think also in soliciting from, you know, some contractors that, you know.
Yeah, there's, there's direct mailings, that, I mean, but because of the numbers, you know, if it was, if it was twenty-six hundred and not twenty-six thousand?
Right.
I would be a lot less concerned. I would be a lot less concerned. But I think, I think it's a wise move for us to at least go through the steps.
You've already started that process, so.
Tracy?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I've made phone calls.
Refresh me, I'm, I'm drawing a blank. We have this money put aside already?
It was in, for next year's budget, not this.
For next year's budget, but we're looking at spending it now.
It was a warrant article.
It's a warrant article, but he's talking about July fourth, so that's July first, as long as it's after July first, we're good. And it's, it's put aside. I'm, I bet we'll vote him when I say this, or maybe, wait, I'm a little uncomfortable about spending money like that right now when we're on a frozen budget.
I'll make a motion to extend the meeting beyond eight o'clock PM.
We'll both say aye.
Oh, seconded.
Call a favor?
I hands up, seconded.
Bye.
I know we have this.
Are you done?
It's not this year's, you can't use the money that's in the warrant article in the trust fund.
Okay, so it was a warrant article, it's voted for that, it's voted specifically for that, okay.
You can't use it.
I was trying to get clarification, cause, you know, I get that budget committee headache and it kinda damaged me.
Tracy?
So we, as a consensus, the newspaper is not, is not necessary, all the other means of communication that Ralph suggested, does that work for you?
Yeah, yeah, we'll do what we have to do.
Sandy?
I have a question. If, since we're doing this so late and getting it out, if we start in July, will these rooms be ready for the school by the end of August?
We can't start before July.
Yeah, I know, but.
So, I mean, any, any project we ever do, any renovation, based on the, the, the new budget, can't start, so it'll have to happen. And that's why Joe's trying to get on top of this now, so he can get people in here walking in by July seventh.
I personally, I wanted to record that, I would have preferred that we knew we had this money to spend, and that I think we should have started doing something first of April, instead of now.
You'll get it done.
I usually do.
I have faith.
Hey, Ralph.
Can you, I don't know what you mean by that, Sandy, we knew we had the money to spend, or we knew we, we had this project?
We knew we had the money, we knew we had the money, because we, it was approved by voters, and I just think that we, I would rather be proactive, and I don't see why we couldn't have started putting out, you know, bids before.
We had a little hiccup with our sprinkler system.
So this was the forty thousand dollar article that, okay, all right.
And this twenty-six was specific to that, to that renovation.
All right, now I'm catching up.
But we've also had a few things go on that, you know.
Yeah, we gotta sprinkle a ball.
That time, that window of opportunity for me isn't always like right there, I mean, we're also doing other things throughout the course of the day in the building, and we start down, sit down, take the class, Joe, clean up an aisle three.
No, there again, the reason why I think we need someone who's not, not a doing dual duty.
We're gaining. Tracy?
Since it is a tight, it is tight timeline, could you bring us updates, so we know what we're dealing with in September? If we're, if we need to restructure something?
Yeah.
Thanks, just updates, okay.
For each board meeting, or just as we're going?
Yeah, just as appropriate, as you feel. If you, if you find that it's not looking good for September, if you could give us an early heads up, that would really be appreciated.
Most definitely, you'll know well in advance of that.
Okay, and last minute, last minute is not.
My superiors won't let that happen.
I, I don't, yes, I don't, last minute does not, it's not easy, so thank you.
No, absolutely not.
And, and this proposal will take care of the issue, this is a, this is something that will address our needs.
I see this is a Band-Aid, torn aids, it's, it's not a fix, it's a Band-Aid to address the, address some of these space needs that we have, allow the partner program to evolve, but by no means is this solving our space issues.
This is where I'd like to see the feasibility study next year, get back into the budget in order to see, have an outside entity come in and let us know what we need.
If we need anything, I mean, I, I won't hear anything, you know, may, maybe I'm looking at it wrong, but I, I wanna know for sure that we're not, we're not gonna short, we're not gonna be short-sighted on this, and that we end up continuing with this space crunch, where we've taken every available room over seven hundred and fifty square feet and turned it into a classroom, where, I, I, I'll make sure.
Of course, keep in mind the history, six hundred and twenty-two students have been here as the building is in the past.
And things have certainly evolved since.
Well, I mean.
I know, yeah, and we.
Larger class size was one of the issues.
Yep. So, I, I see it's a Band-Aid.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good, I appreciate it.
Um, how, what's it look like out there right now? I haven't been down that end for a while, is, I mean.
I was gonna use a workshop for that.
For what, what it looks like? Well, I just, I had a parent complain to me about the lack of organization in many of the classrooms, and I mentioned to you the last board meeting that I'd like to go see some classrooms, I'd like to drop in and peek at some classrooms, we, we didn't do it. I don't know if, if there's time to do it tonight, but I, I wanna do it, and I, because if everything's messy, it's not conducive to learning, but it's a waste of space as well, and I think it's not professional. And we did a tour, what, in the fall? And there were a couple of really fantastic classrooms, and there were a couple of horrors that I would have been really unhappy for my child to be in. And I think that while we're talking about space and fixing things, I think we need to start looking, I think the board needs to look at our own school, we need to walk around our own school and see, and make individual people accountable for the, how their rooms look, because it's difficult for a child who's used to, you know, any kind of order, to go into a messy classroom that's disordered and learn.
Just to, just to clarify on that, we do do, we do have the health officers of the town come over and do a walk-through.
I'm, I'm not saying it's moldy, or, you know, I was just.
No, no, this is for, this is for stuff on fire, extinction, coal, it's clutter, housekeeping.
Well, we were, right, we were horrified by a closet in a specific area that was just materials on the floor spread out, a couple of different classrooms where there was just, I mean, it's like, you know, when, when I leave my house on a rough day and I say, I hope that there's no fire, cause I don't want the firemen to come in, you know, it was like that, you know, you don't want the firemen to have to come in here and see that, but the kids have to see it every day, and I think the school board should be seeing our school on a regular basis, not once a year.
I was hoping you could address that at, at the workshop, so maybe if you have time, you could stop by.
Absolutely.
When's the workshop?
Fourteenth.
Public comment?
Oh, wait, hold on.
Oh, wait, wait, wait.
What am I missing here?
I have, yeah, I have others, too.
Says nothing there.
I know, I gotta add, my other, I wanted, I wanted to jump on the, you know, the backside of what Joe was saying, you know, we, I did take the initiative, and Joe brought me a great opportunity, a couple of weeks ago, that there was a school district that did not want the brand-new whiteboards that they had brought into the school and installed, some right around seventeen thousand dollars worth of whiteboards.
Oh, it wasn't that much.
Oh, it was.
No, it was like probably three, probably like four thousand.
Oh, I thought you said a P, it was like seventeen thousand.
No, no.
My mistake, I, I don't want to misspeak, I, and so it cost us a hundred and seventy-five dollars to pick them up in a U-Haul bus, so I said, you know, money well spent, and so we picked up these brand-new whiteboards that had just been installed, the superintendent didn't care for, and we snagged them. So we can replace whiteboards here in this building without spending any money, that whiteboards, it could be replaced, maybe we'll make that one.
Free? Did I miss that? I was looking at my calendar.
We didn't pay anything for it.
Nice, home run.
We have to, I would like to schedule a public hearing for our next board meeting, because we have to withdraw the money from the special ed trust, we need to have a spec, we need to have a public hearing to do that. And Mr. Kaspersky did contact me, asking the board if they would give a letter of support for the water department moving forward with a community, a community grant, that would allow them to move forward on the repairing the water system.
I don't know. This, the, they, the school, I put the school first, and I, I don't see how we can support a water district when we don't, when we're, we're already over on our budgets, so.
Just the letter, it's just the letter of support?
That's just me, so, there's, there are people.
We just wanna, you know, keep in mind that we're on that water system.
We can build a well.
Well, I, I'm all for wells.
We're, we're, we're on the water system, we, we missed a day of school, there, there are days when the kids can't drink the water, and then he was a big proponent of not passing our budget because it went over three percent.
He was.
I'm sorry, he should stay within his three percent as well, and plan, and I don't support these big, you know, his bad planning or whatever doesn't make, just support from this board, or from this seat of the board.
Joe, is the well non-functioning now, has it been decommissioned, or?
It, it's there, but I haven't turned it on, the last time, we weren't getting any water out of it.
Can we try that, can we try that again?
Bet you get some water now.
Or you might get sparks.
What they, what they said is that the veins have closed up from when we fracked it that last time.
Oh, you already fracked, uh, fracked?
And, and, so, it was before my time, they were down six hundred and forty feet, then I found history on it that it was fracked, and then, since then, they've saying that the veins have, from the sediment has filled in, so we're not getting water, the stag line's not coming back, it's not recovering for that field.
Yeah, but a six hundred-foot well's got nine hundred gallons of reservoir.
I'm just telling you what they told me.
Tracy?
I, I do think there is a, a problem with the water, and we have schoolchildren here, and I do think it's possible we need to look at alternatives. You walk, drive around town and there's holes everywhere, and it's very possibly, very shortly not gonna be safe, and we are gonna be in a, in a problem. I had a well at our house two years ago, and I know how long it took, and there's already infrastructure in the school, but it may be something we should at least investigate.
Maybe we can drill some wells on the property on rent, or, after we get the electric.
Okay, Jerry.
And I was just, as we agreed upon at the last board meeting, that the question will be put in writing, and I would read them at the next board meeting. First question was, who asked Ms. Dacacine to have forty-five thousand dollar number, and what line would it come from for the board meeting prior to hiring the administrators? That didn't come from anybody on the board, that came from me, as we had to find the money for, to pay for the position. Number two, who determined that the system was not ready for the upgrade, surely not the VA. This information was presented to Jerry Gregor from the financial staff, the SAU, which did include the VA. And this unnecessary upgrade wasn't known two months ago, and we moved from the budget when you had discussions with the budget committee, with such a tight budget, it would have taken time to find the extra money. This item was put in the budget by the previous superintendent and not addressed again until we had to look at this. Does a new superintendent have a mentor, if so, where is the money coming from? The answer is no. At the last meeting, Sandy said the withdrawal plan only passed by seventy-six votes. To clarify, that article required a three-fifth vote, not just the majority, so saying it passed by seventy-six vote is a bit misleading, a little misleading, excuse me. Can this be corrected? And I will position that to be, that'd be a question for Ms. Johnson herself. How long is this board going to allow children who do not reside in Wakefield to continue to attend Paul School? The state says a cost Wakefield of fourteen thousand dollars per child to educate, per child to educate a child at Paul School. Is the understanding, Mr. Gregor, that all the students who are attending the Paul School are legally allowed to do so? Why aren't the lunch bills that are over a hundred dollars going to collection agencies? It was voted by the previous board, six thousand eight hundred dollars for the taxpayers to pay, when some of it could have been mitigated, who oversees this? This is overseen by the superintendent and business administrator, all this was voted on, it has never, it was never made a policy and it's unknown, that it's ever been utilized, and I don't recall it ever being utilized. Why was a policy GCO followed? And that is about evaluations and contracts, and I, we all, I'll be honest, I didn't know that GCO even existed, I didn't know that it was ever employed to be used as a part of the contracts being assigned or offered.
Tracy?
Everybody, if you look on your desk, I passed out a chart, and this is a chart that Priscilla gave me to share with the board, she asked me to share with you the superintendent totals from two thousand eighteen, nineteen, for nine different districts. I did give you one, Ralph, I handed it up to everybody, so, yeah, that's it, it was probably early in your pile.
Okay.
Look at mine. I have reviewed them, and I compared them to the Department of Ed numbers. Priscilla, do you want me to go over them with everybody?
It's up to you.
No, it's really up to you, we're all set with our numbers, you, you asked this, I gave it to everybody, but if you would like me to, I did it, I compared it to the Department.
I'd like to give what you have.
Okay, Barnstead, you have listed as part-time, so I did give them a call, it is actually a part-time combined principal, I'm gonna have, and it's, and they, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, take that back, it is a part-time position for July one through June thirty, at thirty-two hours, three to four days a week during school, one to two, but they also have a BA at seventy-three thousand dollars to cover it. And other positions that they have full-time, and they chose to do a part-time superintendent. Gratham is the same, Lime, you have part-time one hundred and ninety-four with a salary of one hundred and forty-five, that's actually a full-time position combined with principal and an academic director, making ninety thousand. So some of these are misleading. Mason, you have as part-time eighty-nine students, it's seventy-one, one eighty-six, it's actually seventy-nine, one eighty-one. Plainfield, you have listed as two hundred and fourteen students, part-time at sixty-four, but it's actually full-time with Cornish for a hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine. Alton, I didn't, it's according to the DOE, is eighty-eight, part-time, five eighteen, but when you look at something like that, you know there's other full-time people on the property, I didn't research it further. Fremont, again, it's spelt with one E, you show full-time for four twenty-three and eighty thousand, I called, they're actually part-time at eighty thousand. Winchester, full-time at seventy-four, it's actually a full-time position with Surrey and Sullivan at thirty thousand and thirty thousand six hundred for a total of a hundred and thirty-five, two hundred. Gilmington, I didn't actually call, but you have that as part-time, four twenty-three. So, I, when I do, I do my due diligence, I, I go to the DOE and I look at all the numbers, all of them, it doesn't matter how many they have. So here's Wakefield for the lowest beginning salary for the state of New Hampshire, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, so this is alphabetical order, so obviously we're W. This is in order of highest to lowest, Wakefield is one forty-seven out of one fifty-nine, doesn't matter, you, it doesn't matter if they're K through eight, there's only ten schools below us, which are not even the K through eight, cause we all stood there and yelled them all out, and they're all up in here. So you look, this is DOE, made it big, and this is where we fall for last year, we didn't raise the rates, next year, we're gonna be here. But I use the DOE charts, I don't, I don't.
Is that superintendent salaries?
No, this is teachers.
Teacher salaries, again.
Actually, so what I did was, all the full-time salaries, there are eighty-five full-time superintendent salaries, I got off of the DOE, all the salaries are right here, there are only ten that are below a hundred and ten out of eighty-five. I am still comfortable with our choice, even looking at the charts that were shared. Is that okay with everybody?
Excellent job, Tracy.
Can I answer for that? Can I answer?
Let's wait for a public comment, so.
Just, well, she's doing it now.
She said wait. She said wait.
To clarify.
Yeah, I think she should wait, she can boss us around.
Public comment, we go.
Okay, one more comment, you know, we did say the workshops, so just to clarify, workshops are gonna be at five o'clock, which would include the one on the fourteenth, the bowls workshop.
Two things for other.
Okay, go ahead.
One is, the, I planned on attending a workshop at HB sixteen twelve, however, it's been canceled, but they did send to me information on student data privacy consortium cancel, that was emailed to me, and it looks like something we might wanna get involved with. It would be four, three hundred and forty dollars per year starting July first, this is the information I'd like to turn over to Jerry to look at, but I think it's something, it would, would help us for meeting the student privacy.
Hey, the, the whole, it's a great idea, they, they do all the work for you, and, and, you know, developing the policies and the practices, meeting the HB sixteen twelve.
I thought it was, I thought.
Yeah, short money for what you get out of them.
Yeah, and they said from zero, from a population of zero to two hundred and twenty-five hundred, it was three hundred and forty dollars per year. And my second one that I have is, I've been looking at the minutes, and the minutes have been kind of daunting for me. I'd like us to comply with the RSAs, and I have a, for people that they can look at, I don't expect any, to have any, you know, consensus this time, but for next, next meeting, I'd like to see if people would like to comply with them. And just so that people know, it's, says, minutes. And just so that people know, it's, um, says, um, minutes, minute meetings must be kept and must include, A, the names of members present, B, the names of persons appearing before the body, C, a brief descrip, discuss, description of each subject discussed, and a s, description of all final decisions made, including all decisions to meet in non, to meet in non-public sessions. Final decisions include actions and all motions made, even if the motion fails. A clear description of the motion, the person making the motion, and the person seconding the motion should also be included. Uh, then they also said minutes are not required to include synographic or verbatim transcriptions. And they stated Petro versus City of Nashua in nineteen sixty-eight. However, there may be other statutes which require verbatim record for certain types of public proceedings. And this is something I'd like us to bring on, uh, under consideration.
Yeah, I, I'll speak to Larissa here a little bit, say it is quite time-consuming for her to do the level of minutes that she's been, she's been taking lately. And I, and again, it's not required, but, you know, I, I just think I'd like to see her a bit cut down on some of the time that she's spent taking minutes, not taking minutes, but transcribing the minutes, you know, after the meetings. Um, it's challenging.
Ralph, so, just, uh, two things, other business, uh, the last part which Sandy, you know, was talking about. You'll find in ninety-one A, for, um, open discussion, the law will allow a particular comment from a particular board member to be emphasized or clearly stated in the minutes, whether it's public or non-public. If a member of the board or commission states for the record, that shall be in the record. And people have fought that in court and, no, not prevailed.
And I'm not objecting to that, I'm just objecting to the, the, um, he said, she said, and trying to get the flavor of it. I mean, if it's something that somebody wants, I think that needs to be in. But we need, as a board member, to state it. But right now, I'm asking is for people to go home, consider it, and to bring it up at another meeting.
I would concur that it's fairly accurate information that you're giving us. Um, the other thing, the other thing, uh, was brought to my attention, then I watched the meeting. Um, during public comment, I, I think would be prudent and wise for the board to listen to the entire comment before, um, and, and probably not even respond, you know, thank people for their comments, say it's going under advisement or whatever we have to say. But if a back and forth should ensue, I would ask the, the chair for points of order. I would also ask the chair to remember that it's public comment. So, the public should hold the floor until that part of the agenda is completely over. Um, if that person speaking is interrupted, whatever time it takes for the interruption, that speaker who should've had the floor should be awarded that same amount of time back. So, if, if somebody's trying to make a point, isn't able but has to listen to a minute or two of rebuttal, that minute or two should be added back onto the public.
Thank you, Ralph, for saying that, 'cause I was, before we had the public comment, I was gonna say that, um, didn't wanna go back and forth thing anymore, you know, it just gets out of hand.
It does.
Um, so, I agree with you there, and thank you for that.
And I second that as well.
I do too.
Oh, come on, I know it's me and I won't do it again.
It's all of us, it's all of us.
No, it is really.
It is all of us.
Also, we're not addressing, uh, comments, we're just accepting comments and it's, no more.
Anybody else, have you got other, other business? Public comment.
Just to go back to what, uh, Tracy had, uh, the hundred and forty-five, eight sixty from Lime, they're actually paying, uh, fifty-eight thousand for their superintendent, so, it's a district administrator. And I was comparing apples to apples, not apples to oranges in this. And I went back to the DOE site and I figured it's not that, but needless to say. Okay, first of all.
Is that all you have?
No, I have more. Are you turning it up?
No.
So, go. You brought the big book?
This is the policy book, my policy book. I'd like to turn it back into the board. And these are all the policies that I've been working on since the board, the policy committee, uh, met on this eighteenth of September. That's the last time they met. These, a lot of these policies contain policies that are required by law that you don't have in your policy book. There's your book.
Thank you.
I do have a couple of things here. I'm gonna speak directly to the chairs, it states in your policy, and I expect not to be interrupted or see you whispering comments between one another. I'm gonna correct a couple of lies.
Uh, I'll raise a hand, Priscilla. I'll go raise a hand while you're speaking, as they normally do.
Well, I'm, I'm asking for some.
Just, just go ahead and, and, the floor.
While berating the budget committee at the last meeting, Mrs. McCauley said, quote, "One guy said a five-dollar strap would cure an IEP." At that time, Dr. Tyree was talking about children with behavioral problems. What that budget committee member actually said was, quote, "My mother had a five-dollar strap that made me get in line." IEPs were not discussed in that segment at all. So, that corrects that. At the last meeting, when I asked if I would get a copy of, uh, committee schedules, Mrs. Kolb said, quote, "We're just having board members on policy now." I asked when I was going to be notified that I was canned from that too, and Mrs. Kolb said, "We voted on it four meetings ago. When we were voting on committees, we said it was going to be school board members only. We took that position." I replied, "I don't think so." Mr. Ula asked Mrs. Kolb if it was on camera, and she replied, "It was." And I said, "I'll check the video," 'cause I knew that wasn't true. Well, I checked the video, and not only was that not discussed on camera, but it was not, never voted on. So, that's untrue. Uh, was the, this decided outside of a meeting because it was, it wasn't, uh, didn't occur during a meeting. I was never rude, argumentative, or disrespectful while sitting on the committee. Mr. Gregor was at every meeting, and I'm sure he contested that fact. The policy committee, policy being a main function of the board, has not met since the eighteenth, prior to me, being targeted. And I also wanna know when the board, and you probably have to give me this one in writing, or next week. When did the board make the decision that the treasurer had to send a note to the ESU that stated that she had deputized me as deputy treasurer to fill in when she's absent? I don't have a problem with her doing this. I've held this non-paying volunteer position for a number of years. I just wanna know when the board made this decision? And whether it was the whole board or one person again, making decisions on their own outside of a meeting? These kinds of untrue accusations, lies, and attacks on members of the public have to stop. Stop conducting the business of this board with transparency, truth, and decorum. Stop, stop making snap decisions that cost taxpayers unfunded dollars. This board is out of control. People interrupting each other, whispering to one another while people are talking, and the camera picks that all up. Attacking the public, telling untruths, making decisions outside of a meeting. I'll give Bob credit, he tries his hardest to rein some of you in, but gets no cooperation.
Thank you, Priscilla. Anybody else? Seeing none?
Steve.
Oh, sorry, Stephen, see you here.
Um, I don't know. Tonight I've heard, I, I mean, we have a, a budget that's been frozen. And I believe I heard about three more hires. Last meeting, you gave someone a raise, or a stipend or something. At deliberative session, you cry in poor mouth. And out of at least two board members, multiple times at deliberative session, it was just the cost of another barter pizza. But now you people, it's out of control spending. But there's one thing, as, as Mrs. Kolb comes up with her nice little chart, I don't know where she gets some of these numbers from, 'cause it's certainly not, can't be on this plan. But one thing she never, well, look at the salaries, was it one of, the ten from the bar? How about, how about the, the education of the children? Why isn't that, where, where, last time I checked, we were one ninety-two out of two forty-two. Nobody ever talks about the ranking of, of the children's academic achievement. Will all this additional spending get us into the fiftieth percentile? I mean, I don't even, wouldn't even expect us to be the top school in the state. But can we just be maybe the fiftieth percentile? Would that, why doesn't people like Tracy Kolb ever bring that up? All she talks about is our tax rate in town is too low. We need to pick, just, uh, in all the, the years I worked, nobody ever got a handout just for showing up. You had to actually produce or you were gone. Here, all you do is show up. And I hope the taxpayers finally, they started saying no this budget cycle, and I hope they continue to say no because none of this is affecting academic achievement like it should. And it's, this, it's a disgrace. The whole, this whole thing is a disgrace. All of you should be, some of you board members are well, it's, it's a shame. Public education is becoming a joke, especially in Wakefield.
Beth?
If public comment is for comments, if we have a question, how should that be addressed? Like, when should that be posed or expressed in the answer?
You, you can say your question and, and we, we'll, we turn it to you if we can the next meeting.
Okay.
Which we did, which we did tonight.
Thank you.
Is that it? Anybody else, anything else? Motion to adjourn?
I'm moving to adjourn.
And second?
Second.
All a favor?
Aye.
Aye.